Curtis is ready. It is six o'clock, so we'll call our meeting to order. We entertain a motion to for the agenda. Check's up the agenda.
Still not.
Support. Motion support. Any comments, questions, changes, positions, provisions? If you have none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No. Motion is carried. We have an agenda. Rule has been taken.
It is.
That is true. Yes. Pledge of allegiance. If everyone please rise and join us in pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, we can entertain a motion for the approval of the October 28, 2025, regular meeting minutes. Move approval.
Support.
Motion support. Does anybody have comments or questions? I hear none. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No. Motion is carried. Thank you. Hearings. First, we are to hold a public hearing at 6:00 PM, or as soon thereafter as the agenda will allow, to receive comments and consider approval of proposed ordinance number 849 for renewal of a 30-year franchise agreement with Consumers Energy, originally approved November 8, 2005. Your pleasure.
Move to set the public hearing.
To open.
Open.
That's what I thought I heard.
Yeah.
So we have a motion to and support to open the meeting. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No. Motion is carried. We are in the meeting.
This is, we set this meeting at our last, um, last meeting to approve a 30-year extension, or a new, actually, a new ordinance for the franchise, for the gas lines within our rights of way. Basically, it's a very simple, straightforward, two-page agreement that basically says the responsibilities of Consumers Energy for, for those gas lines. Us holding, you know, them holding us harmless as they do their work, making sure that, you know, they're not obstructing ingress, egress of different areas more than they need to or have to, maintenance of trees and things of those nature in, in our rights of way. And then, when it's all said and done, we both have the right, 60 days written notice either party can, can excuse themselves from the agreement. So there's always that option. So it's not something that's written in, in stone, you know, for those 30 years. At our last meeting, Roxanne did ask about the years of the agreement. Our previous one, we had 20 years. So that was a misspeak and mistype. It wasn't 10 years, our previous one. It was a 20-year agreement.
Okay.
And we did include last, the last ordinance, just for, for your reference. Bob Balzer from Consumers Energy is here if he had any additional questions. But the 30 years, just like anything else, when you put in an ordinance or agreement together, that, you know, the longer you have it, it's just, you don't have to deal with it as, as often. So that's really the, the only reason for a change from the 20-year to the 30-year. But that's complete up to this board, too. If you wanted to, you know, so we want to keep it at 20 years, you could do that. But again, we do have that, you have that 60-day written notice to, to get out of it anyway. So, um, here's relief.
And I don't think Consumers Energy's going anywhere. So.
No. And, and it's, he was just making sure that we're all on some page when, when they're doing their work and then what we can expect from them and.
A great partnership.
Yeah. And we'll talk a little bit about that in the newsletter because they've got some work going on.
Yeah, they're making some fairly substantial investments in the system.
That's right.
Talking about here. So that's, that's good. Anybody else have comments or questions? I hear none. Any members of the public that would like to have comments or ask questions about this agreement?
I'm not seeing anyone. Go forward. So with that, any? Move to close the public hearing.
Okay. We have a motion and support to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No. Motion is carried. The hearing is closed. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we are to set a public hearing for Tuesday, November 25, 2025, at 6:00 PM, or as soon thereafter as the agenda will allow, to consider an amended application for industrial facilities tax exemption certificate from Avalon and Tahoe Manufacturing for the Building B expansion. Move to set the hearing.
Support.
And motion support.
Um, the reason for the, the reason for the change is obviously the cost came in higher than what they were predicting on their original application to this board. And to modify it to send it back into the state, they need a public hearing and to get, oh, and the feedback from the board and a resolution to do so.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No. Motion is carried. We've set the hearing. Next, we are to set a public hearing for Tuesday, November 25, 2025, at 6:00 PM, or as soon thereafter as the agenda allows. And this is to consider approval of a special assessment for costs of demolishing the structure at 702 Gresham Avenue.
Move to set the hearing.
Support.
Here we have motion support.
This is the, the one dangerous building of the three that will be demoing. This will allow us, as a city, to special assess the cost of the demo, the asbestos removal, and the testing for the asbestos to the property itself. So when it does, it most likely will go through foreclosure. If it does, it will stay with the property. So speaking with the county treasurer, the process would be, we would make made whole for those costs. And then that would be the minimum bid, basically in perpetuity until they got, you know, they would be looking for those dollars to be, to be paid back. If it was just, because we had talked about putting a lien on the property for the cost of the demo and the asbestos testing and, and removal. But once it goes into the foreclosure process, all liens are, are sponge gone. So this is the safe way to make sure that, as, at least as a city, we get recouped for these costs that we've, we spent to take the building down.
There was restoration of the site as well.
As well, yes.
Planting grass and everything.
Planting grass, yes. It's all topsoil.
Fairly attractive.
Yes. Then topsoiled, the restoration of the terrace, and then hydroseated.
Okay. Cool. All right. Any more questions or comments? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No. Motion is carried. We've set that hearing. Next, we are to set a public hearing for Tuesday, December 9, 2025, at 6:00 PM, or as soon thereafter as the agenda will allow, to consider final special assessment district number three of the 2023 for sanitary sewer service leads constructed as part of the north, north of Washington sanitary sewer project.
Move to set the hearing.
Support.
Motion support.
Yep. There's gonna be a bunch of these. You're saying, um, these are the projects that we had public hearings, gosh, months ago.
Year.
Yep. Set the districts for the folks. And then we have a second public hearing for the actual special assessment of the actual costs that were incurred to put in the, the size of line that needed to happen. Or if they didn't need to replace it, they come off that. So that is what we'll be doing in this request. And then the following requests for these sewer laterals.
Okay. Comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No. Motion is carried. Also, number five, set a public hearing for Tuesday, December 9, 2025, again, at 6:00 PM, or as soon thereafter as the agenda allows, to consider a final special assessment district number two of 2024 for construction of sanitary sewer service leads on Charles Avenue.
Move to set the hearing.
Support. Motion support. Same story?
Same story. Yep. And you'll get, if you come to the next, the meeting in December, you'll hear all about it. So.
People get their notices?
Yes, they do.
Come to talk to us. All right. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No. Motion is carried. Number six, set a public hearing for Tuesday, December 9, 2025, at 6:00 PM, or as soon thereafter as the agenda will allow, to consider a final special assessment district number four of 2024 for construction of sanitary sewer leads on Moyer Avenue.
Move to set the hearing.
Support. Motion support. Eric?
Yep. This is, again, this is a neighborhood street project. And part of that street project was to replace the sanitary and the sanitary sewer laterals. And just as a, add a note, and I know Dave will discuss it when he does his public hearings, this is something that this board started many years ago now. So we don't have to go back in and, and tear up a road when a sanitary sewer lateral goes bad. So increasing the life of the, of the surface.
Yes. Comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No. Motion is carried. We've set another hearing. We'll be busy. Moving on to resolutions. We're to consider a resolution to ratify the investment of the following city funds. Before us tonight, we have two of them, a U.S. Treasury purchase and a CD. Your pleasure.
Move to ratify the investments. Correct? Did I say something?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion support. Does anybody have comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No. Motion is carried. Thank you. Ordinances. First up, we would consider a resolution to adopt ordinance number 849, which is an ordinance granting to Consumers Energy Company its successors and assigns the right and authority to lay, maintain, and commercially operate gas lines and facilities, including but not limited to highways, streets, alleys, bridges, and waterways, and to conduct a local gas business in the city of Elma for a period of 30 years. Your pleasure. Move to adapt.
Support.
Motion support. We've talked a bit about it.
Nope. Nope. It's just, uh, I believe most of us here will never have to do it again.
Well, let's hope you're wrong.
Yeah.
Well, we won them.
I probably won't be. I don't like talking about that. So. Does anybody have questions or comments?
You're real. I may be for.
It's all for sure. Yeah. Hearing none. So all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No. Motion is carried. Thank you. Thank you, Bob. We appreciate the relationship and everything you guys do for us. Next, consideration of a resolution to introduce ordinance number 850, which is an ordinance to amend the zoning map as appears in section 60-52 of the ordinances of the city of Elma, to zone parcel number 29-51-009-001-00, which currently has no zoning, zoning classification to L1, which is limited industrial district.
Move to introduce ordinance.
Support. Motion support.
Yeah, that's exactly true. Um, this doesn't have an address. It's a, it's the vacant piece of property that's next to our Lime Lagoons, just south of Van Buren Road. The city purchased this property in 1995, and for some reason, it was never given a zoning classification. So we did hold our public hearing for the zoning of the parcel at our last city planning commission meeting. And that's why it's in front of introduction. But it was underneath our master plan for future land use. It did, it was designated as public, quasi-public, which are for municipal and public utility, public utility uses. So, um, one, that's what we're gonna use it for. That's what we purchased it for. So the intended use, that's the correct zoning will be LI. And then being consistent with the future land use map is the other reason why it makes sense that that's the proper zoning classification for this parcel.
Okay. Thank you. Comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No. Motion is carried. We've set that, or we've introduced the ordinance, excuse me. Number three, consideration of a resolution to introduce ordinance number 851, which is an ordinance to amend the zoning map as appears in section 60-52 of the ordinances of the city of Elma. This will rezone parcel number 29-51-092-251-00 from R1, which is single-family residential, to LI, limited industrial. This is adjacent to the side, the other property. All right?
That's correct.
Move to introduce the ordinance. Support. And motion support. More background?
This is the actual Lime Lagoon itself. So if you look at our aerial and you drive by there, that's where it's part of the water treatment process. So byproduct is a, is a lime, is lime. This is zoned R1. I can't tell you why it's zoned R1. So the current use is public, quasi-public, for future land use. So to rezone it to LI is proven because that is the actual use and it will always be the use as a limited industrial public utility use. And, um, yeah, R1 just doesn't obviously fit. So.
I gotta build a house, huh?
We're fixing. So this is a part of just getting that in the proper zoning classification. And we did hold a public hearing at our last city planning commission meeting. And both these were recommended to bring to you as introductions.
Okay. Comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No. Motion is carried. Thank you. Moving on to reports of officers, boards, and committees. Commissioners may receive the following reports by one resolution, or any commissioner may remove any item within the section for individual discussion and vote. Before us tonight, we have the Parks Committee, October 27, 2025, draft meeting minutes. The Zoning Board of Appeals, November 3, 2025, draft meeting minutes. The Planning Commission, November 3, 2025, draft meeting minutes. The Elma Police Department, October 2025, report. The Elma Transit, October 2025, report. The Code Enforcement, October 2025, report. The Building Permits Report for May through October of 2025. The DWSRF Construction Progress Update Report, and the City Managers Report. Your pleasure on the nine.
I move to accept one through eight.
Support.
Okay. We have motion support through one through eight. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No. Motion is carried. We've received those reports. Your pleasure on number nine, City Managers Report.
Move to receive. Support.
Hey, Eric.
All right. Um, the North-South Rail, Passenger Rail Project, the Groundwork, who is the nonprofit that's kind of heading the overall Phase Two process, and the DWSP is the consultant that's doing all the background work as part to, to provide the, what the capital needs will be, the, the possible governing body, looking at the possible numbers of uses of the rail back and forth with the number of trains. That's been hired to do that. They have provided a nice little snapshot of where the process is at, that we made part of the newsletter, that any one of our citizens can also take a look at. They have broken it out, if you took, if you had a chance to take a look at it, of what has been completed as part of the process to date. They are still on schedule. We did meet at the advisory committee almost two weeks ago now. And they are on schedule for, you know, finishing the study this, this winter, and then results and the community engagement of here are the results and discussing that with the different communities along the line, the winter and spring of 2026 here. So we're on schedule with all of that. They've completed the goals, objectives, and purposes of the need statements. They've completed the comparison case studies of other rail lines that are similar, look, you know, through the type of communities and such that are along this line. They have also finished the, the population demographics along the proposed line. And then they are in progress with, where tough stuff comes into, the market analysis and ridership demand forecast, along with the needed capital. They're still working on that as well. So we'll put that in there for the commission to, to review. Some, a bit of good news, and from, at least from my perspective, of getting this project off the ground, but the Business Incubator project that, gosh, was, been, been over a year and a half since that money was appropriated from the Senator Peters earmark from the Senate to put together with Elma College a program downtown for beginning of business incubation, engineering, and teaching of engineering. And a part of that is to look at more of a prototype, prototyping type lab as part of that as well. But we didn't get, they didn't get as much as we were hoping for at the beginning. We were looking for $4 million, got $2 million. So some of the delays with the changes in the government at the federal level, and then also trying, working with Small Business Administration is administering this project for us. They, we needed to amend it because the, the original place, the space we had was just too large for the amount that we had. So we moved from the Brown Printing Building to the Boiler House, which is the smaller building right behind the Wright Mansion, I'm sorry, the Wright Mansion, the Wright Opera Block, for this, for this space. So we're, right now, we are out for professional services for the design of that space. We will have that in, on December 5, for bringing to this board recommendation on December 9, to, to hire the, the engineer architect to get that project designed. Then at some point, we'll be out for bid and then bringing back to this board approval of contractor to do the work. So, all said and done, we're, we're looking with the college to have this up and running by November of 2026 is our, is our goal. For me, the goal is to have that done because that's when Senator Peters' term is up and he's not seeking reelection. So it'd be good to have that all put away, buttoned up, and all the reports done for my sake and Curtis's sake, because we gotta do all the reporting on this, back to the Small Business Administration. So excited to get this going. And inside of the partnership with the college, that we're moving along with that. We've been talking about that marijuana grow over on East Superior Street for a while. Well, the, they have gotten their project from the construction side of it, finished the other city that I can see from the building official. They do have, which means that mean they have their final approvals from mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. So now they're working on their state licensing for their grow. And they have submitted their adult recreation application to us. First, you need the special use permit. So December 1, we'll have a special use permit hearing at Plan Commission to review that. And either the Plan Commissioner will say yes or no. If they say yes, which I don't see why they wouldn't, but they say yes, that then comes here to this board for the actual approval of the resolution to provide them with their license. Part of that license is that that special use permit from the Plan Commission. So by December 9, ball goes to that, that plan, that process. They will have their local marijuana grow license for 1405 on East Superior Street that they can take down to the state of Michigan and finish out the processes for their state licensing there.
And we had, it's been a while, and I don't recall, but we had things about ventilation or smells or things like that as part of
Yes.
the process. And I only asked that because I was driving through Chestening, coming from somewhere. I don't even know where it was. Probably didn't need to be in Chestening, but that's the way I was going. And I was surprised the whole, I mean, I, the whole, driving through, that's all I smelled.
They have a very large.
And I saw a big, yes. And I have a acquaintance who said that her parents live there and that they've gotten used to it. But, and I, I mean, but there's a big sign. But I just, I thought, well, maybe they're having a festival or something. You know, what the dates, the numbers mean. I don't get out much.
That is a very large facility. That's a very large facility.
I wouldn't have thought of it that much if I hadn't been surprised and driving through there. So.
Well, Leo, I haven't been in a place where there, there any substantial size where you don't smell that.
Okay.
That's, that's my, what I, what I've witnessed. So.
Yeah.
But they do have, you know, ventilation systems in there that are approved for, for this use. And, and like I said, it's a very small, you know, it's a 6,000 square foot building. It's not a very large building there. So it's nothing like what you, what they have in Chestening, for sure. So. But there will, most likely, if you get within a certain distance of it, you will have an odor.
Okay. Yeah.
Just, that's what I've seen.
Right. Okay.
That's what I've seen. So. And then, lastly, we did mention Consumers Energy's with their ordinance for their, their, their gas franchise. They are going to be starting here in December, a very large project. We did include a map in the, the newsletter of all the gas mains and services that are going to be replaced.
My God.
Yes. This is just half the city. I mean, you still gotta do the, the city south of the river. But these are good things. I, I would assume most of them, Dave can correct me or Bob can correct me if I'm wrong, but we're probably replacing old galvanized gas lines if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, for the most part.
Maybe even some.
Yeah. Yeah. It's, stuff has been there a long time.
Reproposers.
And, and you hear, you know, you hear news stories here and there across the state, but the county, you know, the country of sometimes things, you know, explode.
Well, oh, yeah. Well, when.
Because they weren't, things weren't replaced.
Well, and even just when you're jiggling or digging around in the dirt, I mean, we've experienced that as a city, that things that are, like, I'm sure my sanitary sewer that was barely holding together was helped by the dirt around it. And so you start, yeah.
And, and, you know, like I said in the newsletter, and we've had our phone calls here, folks asking us what the wooden stakes are, what the green colors on the top, what, you know, you know, the first thing, I assume it's always cities doing some work or something.
It's up to no good.
Yep, exactly. But no, it's, and as we explained to them in, in the newsletter, though, that's, Consumers Energy has hired, you know, third party go through and mark out all the sanitary sewer leads that are going to our, our homes, in hopes that, you know, to limit the number of disruptions or, you know, breakages of those lines, which is, you know, from my perspective, I do appreciate that because ultimately times we have companies that come in and just start boring things and hitting things. So, but I do appreciate them going through and, and.
So will that require digging up road?
Nope. Most of that will be directional bore, and there'll be areas where they have to come up out of it. Like, if you had a chance to see what happened on Charles Avenue last year when they were getting, before we started building Charles Avenue, they had that all working on gas line over there. And it's kind of how that will, you.
When the fiber came in, they did that.
Yeah.
Some of those will be open access.
Yeah. Well, what they did by new.
And that's what they did.
And then interconnections under roads.
Okay. Yeah. With my new pipe. They didn't, they just dug the big crater by my house and then pushed the old one pieces out as they put the new thing in.
If there's several utilities, like if there's water, sewer, storm, they might have potholes to make sure that they know the exact depths so they don't go through them or wreck them. So some of those will have.
Yeah. But like I said, it's, it's, it was very, it's, it's really just a really positive thing that they actually spend the time.
Oh, absolutely. No, I'm all about infrastructure replacements and fixing. So that's.
We'll also take that extra step of
Yes.
marking that stuff out because they didn't have to do that. And I, I do appreciate that because it's, it's expensive. And it helps them too. It's expensive to replace things and put things back together. So I very much appreciate it. Even though we try to explain to people, please leave them there. Just leave the stakes in there. It's not gonna bother. They'll be done by spring. So.
It does.
But that's what I had tonight. And we will have this available on the city's website for folks to come take a look at it at their leisure spot.
Okay. Thank you, Eric.
Are there more questions for? I feel like I had, it's, I'd like to note that I thought it was interesting on the rail, passenger rail.
Oh, yeah.
Service. That, you know, when you, you start thinking about it and talking to people about it, people kind of envision that you're gonna have this rail service start up. It's gonna be daily service or, you know, a couple times a day you'll see trains coming through and passengers getting off. You know, the idea is to build the, you know, explore it and do it more logically. Start out real small. You may do weekend trips, you know, down to Ann Arbor to see a football game or up to Traverse City to go swim or whatever you wanna do. So it'd be very limited service at first, the planning, my, my understanding was. So it'd be very intentional and trying to build up a clientele for the service before. It's not just throwing a bunch of money at it and start running trains up and down the state.
And hoping it works.
And hoping it works. Yeah. This is the idea. You can build it small and let it grow. So. Thought that was a good, good concept.
Yep. And I've been appreciative from the standpoint, I have been very much keeping us engaged with all the communities along, along that line. So I've been very happy to work with them and.
I have to. Yeah. Nice to be part of it. Yes. Okay. Anything else? We have a motion on the table. So all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No. Motion is carried. Managers report is received. Moving on to appropriations. We have interest in paying the bills.
Yes, please. Pay the appropriations.
Support. There we have motion support. Are there any questions about the bills? I hear none. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No. Motion is carried. The bills are paid. Commissioner comments? Michelle, you go first.
Sure. Happy Veterans Day. Roger. Well, everybody.
Just Roger.
All the veterans and Roger.
My holiday.
Yeah. And good luck to the hunters outside the city limits this weekend.
True.
True. Uh, yeah. Just thank you to all the veterans, including Roger.
Right up. Do it.
Thank you.
Danny?
I just echo the sentiment. So, thank you.
Roxanne?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you for the freedoms we're still enjoying and all the hard work of our current military and our veterans. Very appreciative. And sorry, I didn't wait till the question part, but I just started asking, you know, questions. I always forget the rules. When it comes to my mind, I have to say it quickly or it, poof, gone. And thank you to consumers. I think that's great and I appreciate the extra work that you're going to, going to. It's November, I mean, I was just, I'm still mentally in August and then I was just getting ready to appreciate fall and then boom, winter.
Cold.
Boom.
Fall will be back.
Boom, hiss.
Yeah, true.
To winter.
Okay, three.
Yeah. I leave them. I tell myself it's for the little buglings and firefly eggs and all that, but I can't bear to do it at this time of year. I wait till the spring.
Okay, Roger.
Gresham County Players Production of Tuesdays with Maury opens this weekend. Please see it. I don't know if you are familiar with Mitch Albom, most of you should be. Mitch Albom has written for the Detroit Free Press since he was about seven years old, I think, and just an excellent writer, and this started out as a book, Tuesdays with Maury, and it's a true story. It's about he, about him and Maury Schwartz, who was a professor of his. And they just started visiting on Tuesdays and Maury came down with ALS and the progression of the friendship between the two of them for that period of time is just amazing. It's extremely well-written, got two first-class actors. It's just two people in the play. It's short, it's about 45 minutes, I think, without an intermission, but it's definitely worthwhile seeing. Go see Tuesdays with Maury. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Sarah?
Just Christmas, come home down for the Christmas holiday, it's right around the corner. We have one more commission meeting before that, but December 12th is our downtown celebration of the Larry Mott Lighted Parade and the Christmas tree lighting that evening, lots of businesses open that night. The Jingle Bell Run is on the 13th and then we, on the Sunday, from 3 to 6, the second annual, that was annual, Holiday Home Tour that's being put on by the Wright Mansion Restoration Committee. All proceeds go to the mansion, so there's availability for three days worth of activities for you during the Christmas holidays. So that's all available on the Come Home to Elma for the Holidays Facebook page and for the Elmer Action Facebook page.
Okay, thank you. And I just echo what everybody said, thank you, Roger and your fellow servicemen that have given us our freedoms, we appreciate that. And Bob, of course, thank you to the consumers, we appreciate the relationship there as well.
Likewise, Senator.
So with that, we'll open the floor up to the public. If anybody'd like to address the commission, please go to the podium, state your name and address and you'll have up to five minutes to share your thoughts with the commission. Who would like to be first?
Don't trample each other.
I'm not seeing much movement. Okay, we have a taker.
It's terrible when we have to pay people to make comments.
You're staying room.
Tim Gay, County Commissioner, District 3, Emerson, Arcata, Southern Township, Elma, south of Pine River. We hired, you probably know that, we hired a county administrator, very capable person. We interviewed three people, they're all capable. Personally, I, I wanted to go with the youngest one because we're all pretty old. I mean, it's obvious that we need younger people, but the board in its wisdom picked the oldest one, but he's, he's capable. So he's, his first, his name is Timothy James and then it starts with a D, Delano or something. My name was Timothy James too, so. But anyway, you probably know all that, but you seem to want to meet.
Always, always, you're always welcome to join us and give us an update, so thank you.
When does he officially start? Or has he?
What?
When does he officially start?
December 1st, I believe. Oh, we.
That's it.
We also have a finance guy, you know, Todd Molding.
Excellent.
He started.
Thank you, Tim.
Anybody else that'd like to address the commission? Hey, Bob, I'm looking at you.
Would you like?
Okay, with that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion support. Any last comments or questions?